Good evening, I'm Danielle Gorewski, the Director of Communications for East Aronacote Central School District. Welcome to the PTSA-sponsored Board of Education Meet the Candidates Night. This year, we have four candidates running for three seats on our Board of Education. You can vote for three of the candidates at our annual district budget vote on May 16th. Before we get started, I would like to thank the PTSA for sponsoring this event, as well as the candidates for coming up tonight. Our Board of Education consists of nine volunteers elected to serve three-year terms. The Board of Education serves an important role in ensuring the values, beliefs, and priorities of our community are represented, as well as develops policies, allocates resources, and sets goals that drive student programs and operations in the district. I would like to now introduce our four candidates running for the Board of Education. They will be introduced in the order they will appear on the ballot. From left to right, we have Donald Markham, Daniel McInerney, Carol Watt, and Jill Ritchie. Tonight, each candidate will be given three minutes to present opening statements. After opening statements, each candidate will be asked five questions, alternating who answers first. Candidates will be given two minutes per response, and we will end with two-minute closing statements and any audience questions. If candidate's statements or answers approach our time limits, I will let you know. If audience members would like to ask any questions, please write them down on the question cards over there and then give them to our district clerk. Let's begin with opening statements. Don Markham, you get to go first.
Oh, hi, I'm Don, and I'm increasingly seeing young people that can't spell my name. And, you know, it kind of makes me nervous. It seems like the education levels are dropping. I've talked with many college professors that I know, and they've verified that the education levels are dropping of the kids coming into school. So anyways, that's one reason I'm running. My background is, I worked at Harris Corporation eight years. I was lead technician and a group leader. And then I was at Channel Eight, I was a manager. And then I put up the cellphone system, I was lead technician. And soon as we got it up, they laid me off. But anyways, I worked a few places and they closed up. And then I got into a school, I've worked in a school seventeen years, and just retired last year. And I enjoyed working in the school, and I enjoyed the kids, I enjoyed the teachers, I enjoyed working, I have a lot of energy. Most people can't keep up with me. I started a neighborhood association, I'm always doing something new. I was asked to be on three boards, I'm on three boards now. I was at a board meeting at a town the other day, and I spoke, and I thought I was gonna get things thrown at me. And people come up and give me their cards and want me to contact them, and so, you know, I guess it turned out okay. I made a video for my Aronacote channel with the Aronacote Ambulants the other day. I'm always doing something, doing something for the community. I've had a public access TV show for twenty-nine years. Anyways, I'm always doing something, and I think we gotta get back to the basics with education. I'm really worried because the kids, there's a lot of jobs now, but it's a tougher world for the kids. They need to know more, and I think our budgets are gonna get slimmer soon if we go into recession. And there's gonna be problems, there's not enough, gonna be not enough money to go around. And, you know, when good times, people tend to waste things. And we gotta rethink things. Thanks.
I'm Dan McInerney, I'm running for a second term on the East Aronacote Board of Education. As a board member, I've seen firsthand how our district is striving to provide really a great educational system, great educational opportunities for all the students through programs like Avid, Project Lead the Way, career readiness opportunities, which we've had but are expanding at this point, performing arts, athletics, and a lot more. So if you're, you know, in the schools, you see a lot of this stuff happening each and every day. The proposed expansion of pre-K for next year will undoubtedly make students more prepared for success in their first years of school, but I think even beyond that. It's truly gratifying to see the success and achievement of our students on a daily basis. Teachers and staff of the district go above and beyond every single day to give our students the education they need to succeed. And I hope to continue to support the students of the staff of East Aronacote, and I ask for your vote as I run for a second term.
My name is Carol, and I'm number three on the ballot. I've lived in East Aronacote my entire life. I'm a proud 1975 East Ridge grad, although I don't usually tell people that, not the year. And I was honored to be inducted into the East Ridge Hall of Fame in 2009. My husband Robbie and I have been married forty-one years, and we are the proud parents of a 2000 East Ridge grad, Jamie Lee. I'm a self-employed, part-time, as a personal cook, and I'm a school and community volunteer. I live in the house I grew up in. My husband and I chose to raise our daughter where we knew she would get a quality educational foundation that would help her be successful, no matter the life path she chose. And I believe that since Jamie graduated, the quality of education available to our students is even better, with added programs not to be repetitive, IB, Project Lead the Way, and Avid. I'm proud of what we've accomplished and our advocacy in getting our fair share of funding to support those programs and more.
I would like to thank the PTSA, East Aronacote School District, and Danielle for holding this forum, as well as the viewers and other candidates for all they do for the community. Hello, I'm Jill Ritchie, and I'm grateful for this opportunity to share with you my thoughts about service on the East Aronacote School Board. I'm a lifelong resident of East Aronacote, attended our district schools, and I'm a special education teacher. I began my teaching career at Duran Eastman and continued at East Aronacote Middle School. I currently teach sixth grade special education in the North Rosewood School District in Wayne County. As an educator, I'm committed to making sure our students receive the highest quality education. My focus is closing academic and social-emotional gaps, as well as continuing to offer rigorous, relevant curriculum, and to provide our students with a well-rounded, high-quality education, preparing them for their future. As a board member, I firmly believe that we have an obligation to our students and cannot waver from our mission to provide them with the education they deserve. I want to continue our initiatives and programs to serve the academic, mental health, and emotional needs of our students in modern and safe facilities. It's important to evaluate current programming to ensure resources are being allocated to support effective initiatives that benefit our children. We also need to collaborate with our partners in government to ensure we receive the funds and resources to help our students. I think my background as an educator, my experience as a board member, my creativity and commitment to East Aronacote makes me uniquely qualified, sorry, to continue to serve on the school board. I look forward to earning your vote. Please vote yes on May 16th. Again, I'm Jill Ritchie, number four on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. So for our first question, we're gonna start with Dan. So, serving on the Board of Education is a significant time commitment. What motivated you to run for a seat on the Board of Education?
You know, East Aronacote has a dedicated and passionate staff, like I said, that work hard every day to give our students the best education. I think the opportunities that they're afforded are incredible, and I was really motivated to run for a seat on the school board because I wanted to support the work of the students, of the staff, of the superintendent in a more hands-on way. East Aronacote has achieved a lot in the last, well, twenty years, that we've lived in this district, twenty-five years. And I hope that I can work with the Board of Education to further that growth in the years to come. And honestly, it was also a way for me, I felt like it was a way for me to give back, you know, for all the opportunities that my kids received when they were going through the system. This was a time and an opportunity for me to give back to the district as a member of the school board.
Thank you. Carol, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay.
I'm motivated to rerun for a Board of Education seat because I, we, board members, tend to think of themselves as a team, still feel I have more to give to the district. I brought the idea of advocating for full funding of foundation aid to the board table three years ago, and we've done that as a team. We need to do more, though. We need to make sure full funding continues and that the funding formula gets changed, ensuring equity. And during a recent trip to Washington with a few fellow board members, I found out that we only get 7.4% of 40% of IDEA funding. That's Individuals with Disabilities Educational Act. The residents of EI deserve full funding. So the board formed a subcommittee that I am on, along with my friend Jill, and we have a plan to move forward with advocating for that. I also believe passionately in the PTA and the vital role parents play in public education. COVID not only had a negative effect on students, but on parents being in our buildings as well. To encourage participation, I'm the Recording Secretary for the Ivan Green PTA, attempting to bring ideas that will motivate more parents to get involved and help rebuild our PTAs. I would like to continue to work on behalf of our students and community. A strong school system is a strong community.
Supporting student success, my passion for education, and the positive experiences I had in the district motivate me to run for school board. I love seeing and celebrating student successes. I enjoy attending student and district events to support our students. As a student, I had teachers that went above and beyond to build positive relationships with me and went the extra mile to help me learn. I want to give back to a district and the community that's given so much to me. I currently and will continue to advocate for the students in the district. I'm invested in the work of ensuring every child's experience is a positive one in our district. Together, we can continue to improve and celebrate student achievement and ensure our students have what they need to be successful.
Well, I've been going to meetings for fifty years, since I was a teenager, school board meetings, town board meetings, state assembly meetings, you name it, nonprofit meetings, and I'm on three boards now. But anyways, I've always been interested in this stuff. And I've been around, you know, people that are on the school boards, superintendents of schools, a relative of mine worked for a superintendent. And anyways, I've worked in a school seventeen years, and I got along with all the teachers. And I did coach for a while, and I've just been around the schools and the kids all these years. And I have a lot of knowledge of what goes on. And I think that's very important to have that knowledge of what goes on. Thanks.
For our second question, we're gonna start with Carol. How would you define the roles and responsibilities of a board member?
The role of an individual board member is to be part of a team, usually of five, seven, or nine people. We have no individual power. A board member balances the fiscal needs of the community while supporting the educational needs of students. We hire the superintendent, and we adopt policies for the district. We're ultimately responsible for the safety and educational needs of district students and staff. We work with the superintendent to formulate and adopt district goals, and after many presentations and input, the board adopts the budget. And we engage in advocacy if the opportunity arises.
Broadly, the roles and responsibilities of a board member are to listen, be informed, have a shared vision, help determine goals to promote student achievement, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and contribute towards reaching those goals. To that end, a board member works with the superintendent to ensure policies, programs, and processes are aligned with district goals. A board member also carefully reviews data to assess progress towards our goals and to evaluate current programs. In addition, a board member helps adopt the budget and considers capital projects that modernize and increase safety and security in our facilities. Finally, a board member advocates for funding and community resources, as well as be visible at events and communicate and collaborate with community members and support students, teachers, district employees, and community members.
As a board member, we have to hire the superintendent, we've gotta make the vision and goals, which is very important. We have to check the performance of the school, the kids, the superintendent. And then we gotta make a budget, which is, again, is very important. And then we got okay contracts with the union, which sometimes can be tough. And then you have to talk to the people, which I like and I find easy, but...
As you said, the school board functions as a whole, not as individual members. We work collaboratively with the superintendent and the administrative staff to set district goals and draft policy. And the board develops a student-focused budget that aligns strategies and goals with available resources. The board conducts performance evaluations with the superintendent to continuously set standards of improvement. And the board leads the district, accentuating and reinforcing the positive while strategically addressing areas that need improvement. As an individual board member, I also represent the residents and families of the district, and as such, can bring their comments and concerns to board discussions.
So next, we're gonna begin with Jill. How would you support our superintendent in your role as a board member?
Generally, I would support Superintendent Gro by supporting the implementation and continuation of initiatives that best serve our students. More specifically, I would support Superintendent Gro by having open and clear communication with her and fellow board members, by being informed, attending board meetings, attending professional development, serving on committees, and communicating with stakeholders and community members through PTA, committees, open houses, family events, and more. I want to reiterate the importance of clear, consistent communication between the superintendent, fellow board members, and community members to ensure all voices and perspectives are being represented when making decisions for what is best for students.
Thank you. Don?
When I was working, I used to work for the principal and the vice-principal all the time. And so I guess I'm used to this, you know, working in a school and seeing, you know, how a school runs. And so it's kind of a reversed position now. But I'm a solutions guy, I'm very creative, and I'm very confident that maybe sometimes we might get along. But I think in the long run, things will turn out very positive. I'm just a little different in the way I look at things, but I'm very creative. Thanks.
My role as an individual board member is to fully support the superintendent and the initiatives that are put forth, and to work as a team as the board. I mean, for me, that could mean advocating for resources within the local, state, or federal levels, or just simply advocating for support within the district itself. Really, you know, success happens when we all work together to achieve a common goal, and that's the main job of, that's my main role as a board member.
I think the best ways to support the superintendent is to know what your respective roles are so that the superintendent is able to do her job without interference, to be willing to listen, to be unafraid to ask questions, to better understand a topic or program, and to have an open and honest relationship, knowing you can share issues and/or concerns, and/or good things.
Our next question, we're gonna start with you, Don. What knowledge and experience do you possess that makes you a good candidate for the Board of Education?
As I just said, I've worked with the principal, the vice-principal, the PTA, the coaches, the people putting the play on, parents, et cetera, et cetera. I've worked in a school seventeen years, I was custodial in charge of two schools. And I got along pretty good with them, and a lot of people sought me out versus some other people. And I really enjoyed it. It was tough at first, it was a lot of things going on. But I think over time, you kind of learn, and things work out better. But I have a lot of experience in it, I know how to run a school, I know what goes on in the schools. And I do enjoy working with parents and kids in PTA. Thanks.
I have a background in education and management, a little bit of both over the years. And my primary involvement with the schools has been through pretty much all the years as a parent, but also later on, mostly with performing arts and the marching band and events at the high school. So, I mean, it's really given me an opportunity to interact with the parents and learn a lot of what's going on. I also think that, you know, being on the school board for a first term, there's a steep learning curve there. You learn a lot in your first, in your first three years. And so there's a lot of experience, and I really would like the opportunity to put that experience to good use in a second term.
So, having been on the school board several years, I've had the experience of serving not only as a board member, a vice-president, and a president. I am curious, I try to be a good listener, and respond and follow up with issues that are brought to my attention, not necessarily by taking care of the issue myself, but by bringing it to the attention of the appropriate personnel. There is no board member manual, so I try to stay informed by attending training, reading journals, going to seminars, webinars, and taking the time to get to know my fellow board members, to understand their different points of view. I also bring a willingness to participate in school events and in advocacy.
Being a current board member and teacher gives me different perspectives and experiences on policies and systems within education. I participate in numerous committees, both in East Aronacote and in the district I teach in, such as Safety Team, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, PTA, and among others. I seek to maintain and deepen my knowledge of education-related related issues by attending professional development activities. In addition, I'm involved with advocacy at the local, state, and national levels. In the past, the board and myself have advocated for full foundation aid, thank you, Carol, to increase academic and mental health support, to ease transportation burdens, and to expand free and reduced-priced lunches. Looking for the future, towards the future, we formed a subcommittee to advocate for an increase in Individuals Disabilities Act funds as we hope to increase federal rate as we currently are receiving to improve and expand on our support services. And Dan, I have to, like, I like what you said about your first term and learning a lot, I agree. And I would like to put my experience, you know, to work too as well, so thank you for that, Dan.
So for our last question, we're gonna start with Dan. COVID state and federal funding comes to an end in June 2024. Based on the current initiatives that the district supports with these funds, what do you believe we should prioritize with the funding, or when the funding ends, should I say?
The COVID pandemic deeply affected all of us, but it especially affected our students. Many students experienced learning loss, delays in social-emotional development, as well as several and varying mental health issues. When the COVID state and federal funding was announced, East Aronacote prioritized the needs of its students. The district developed and implemented a plan to directly address those issues through hiring more teachers, keeping class sizes low to optimize learning, and adding social workers and counselors to address students' social, emotional, and mental health needs. I believe the district should and will work to retain as many of those staff members as possible. Student achievement is a top priority of the board, and we must give students the help they need in reaching their highest levels of success.
The influx of funding was wonderful, but unfortunately cannot be sustained. Thus, as a board, we'll be listening to presentations on what initiatives work best for students, looking at the data that shows information, and hearing what the superintendent thinks is best to continue. Saying that, I can enthusiastically support the following. Implementing full-day pre-K is vital. Students have come into first grade after COVID, never, some having never been in a classroom, presenting challenges. This is not unique to the district. I was speaking to Tim Roach at Duran, who said it's, the challenges are occurring across the country. Students, however, have to be in our buildings younger, and that will be, better prepare them for a successful school experience. Implementing AVID is another thing. That's advancement via individual determination through fifth grade. The AVID program has proven invaluable. AVID teaches time management, note-taking, organizational skills, writing, inquiry, and critical thinking strategies. As Dan said, we have advocated at the board for lower class sizes at the elementary level to ensure we meet the needs of students and provide increased individual attention. Our math and reading interventionists have helped our students bridge gaps in learning that occurred during the pandemic, and our students still need this support going forward. And of course, amid growing concerns, we continue to look at the best way to keep students and staff safe, both with cyber and other safety measures.
The purpose of the COVID funding was for academic, mental health, social-emotional supports. First and foremost, when most prioritize, what is best for students? With that being said, we must also prioritize what has proven results. We need to take relevant data into account. Of course, data is not everything, and we should collaborate with district, building level, grade level leaders, as well as teachers and support staff to determine how we will most effectively meet our students' needs and readiness levels. With past COVID funding, the district was able to hire an interventionist, a counselors, and reduce class sizes. It's important to continue conversations at all levels of government to see if and when more funding can be secured. But meanwhile, we should explore more grant and community partnership opportunities. It is essential that students continue to receive a high-quality education that does not put a burden on our taxpayers.
Because of a Romanian case study, we know they're probably not gonna catch up, but I still feel we should go back to the basics. It's just in general, they're just, they've been falling behind, and they fell behind more now. And we gotta get off this stuff with, you know, sex changes, and Black Lives Matter, and all this other stuff that I've seen going on in the schools, and I know goes on. We gotta get back to basics, and that's it. Thanks.
We're gonna move on to our audience questions. I believe we have several. So, the first question, we're gonna start with Carol, just continuing in our order. So, this question is, why is it important for local school boards to stay connected with Monroe County School Board Association and the National School Board Association?
Well, for several reasons. One, it's vital because, as I said before, as board members, we don't, there is no manual that trains us. There isn't, where, when you come into this, there's no guidelines that say, okay, this is, these are the steps to becoming a good board member. So, participating at Monroe County or the county level, and the state level, and the national level, gives us a chance to learn, grow, develop, and do, that's our professional development. It also gives us a way to advocate, and we can do that through all those systems.
Yeah, I'm gonna echo a lot of what Carol just said. So, I think a lot of that is good for, like, professional development, especially when people are new coming into the board. Like, I was able to take a lot of professional development opportunities to learn about roles and responsibilities, and policymaking, and things like that. And also to, kind of like, to share ideas locally, as well as nationally, and to collaborate. And obviously, that advocacy piece is huge, because when you're speaking, you know, as a unit on three or four major issues, and you're talking to the same people in all levels of government and within the community to help us accomplish those goals, it really just kind of builds teamwork and gets everybody on the same page.
I agree, but I've pretty much been trained and mentored by people that were on school boards. So I don't feel I personally need it so much, but I agree with what they're saying. Thanks.
Yeah, I would say something, I think the professional development aspect is great, especially at the county level. They're strong advocates for educating people and that. I think at the national level, one of the biggest benefits there is attending conferences and actually hearing about programs that are successful in other places. So, and those, kind of, that idea that you can sit down and talk with somebody, or share your, you know, we all have very similar problems and issues. And if you can sit down with somebody who's already addressed that and found success, it's really powerful to hear what they have to say and say, maybe we could implement that in East Aronacote, so.
Okay, thank you. So next, we're gonna start with Jill. Tell us about your reaction to the waves of curriculum challenges and book banning in the school districts around the country.
It is definitely, I don't, I don't have the right word for it, but it's interesting. It's always thought-provoking, I guess would probably be a better word for it. Because it's kind of like, why is a book getting banned? Why is either that person, the community, or the district reacting in the way that it is? As an educator and an avid reader, in the summer, not all year long, unfortunately, I do enjoy reading. So I do, when the district, when our district implements new books, or proposes new books, I should say, I do read them. But also, too, I think you have to trust with your teachers, your literacy leaders, your directors of education, your assistant superintendent of instruction, to kind of review books that we would be implementing and teaching in the classroom. And, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, whatever your take is on it, sometimes books do come in the classroom that may deal with social justice or might be controversial. But it's, I think it's all in the approach and how you teach it, too. I think, like, educators need to be mindful and open-minded when they're teaching, and, you know, teach kids that it's okay to have conversations, but to be respectful, and to also look at things from different viewpoints and perspectives. So I'm not really into book banning, but I think it's important to review texts prior to teaching them, or, you know, having, giving kids access to them. So I think they should be reviewed, but I like literature.
As a libertarian, adults are adults, there's freedom, kids are kids. I don't believe in they have the freedom to do things. And I'm very nervous if a parent or somebody adult does not believe that. I understand there's, somebody's being investigated for pornography in one of the school districts. It doesn't belong in the school for the little kids. I agree that the little kids, the books should be checked, what they're looking at. I mean, so what if they put a Nazi book in there? What if they put, you know, there's all kinds of books they could put in there that there's people in the room will fight with me. You know, you can't put that in there. A communist book, a Nazi book, what about radical Islam book, you know? Kill the infidels. So don't, don't anybody tell me that there's not books kids should be reading. When you get to be an adult, you can read what you want. But these little kids, I think it's too soon for these kids. And I don't call it a book ban because they're kids. Thanks.
Well, I think, often, what I find is that books will be, there'll be a book ban. And when pressed, the people pushing for the book ban haven't read it. They've seen the title, or they've trusted information they've gotten from a third-hand about it, but they haven't picked it up and read it. And I think, as Jill said, when we get a list of new materials that are gonna be used, especially at the high school, when we get through the whole district, you know, you find that book and you read it. And I find that they're fantastic. You know, and you look at books that have been around, that we all read when we were, especially in high school, I think are some of the ones I read, that probably we wouldn't read now because, you know, they just were not great choices. Classics of literature, but they're, you know, they send a really interesting message that could be better addressed with a more current piece of literature that really does sort of address where kids are. And I think that the target is moving. Kids are exposed to a lot of very adult topics at a younger age. And maybe we're not addressing all of that in the school system, but certainly we have to be ready to provide some kind of support for that. And I think that book banning is generally a pretty bad idea. And the curriculum... And the curriculum idea, I, I don't, I mean, I don't know what it's like in other states, but certainly in New York State, if you want to know what the curriculum is, you just can, you can see it. We're not hiding anything. It's out, it's right there. So the idea that, that you can't, you don't know what your child is learning is, is pretty ludicrous in this, especially here, so.
Carol?
I agree with Dan and Jill. Also, as a board member, you are able to review the books that come through the district. But hopefully, we have put our faith in the people that we hired, the educators, the professionals, the teachers, the admins, to choose the right material that's age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate.
So this next question, we're going to start with Don. Nationwide teacher morale is at an all-time low. Many are leaving the profession. Our kids deserve great teachers. How do you think the Board of Education can attract and retain quality educators?
First thing is, we got to get rid of politics in school. Second thing is, one of my jobs was to quote, throw teachers out at night. I had to force them to go home. You know, they work that hard, believe it or not. So anyways, there's a lot of things we can do. And I think they don't, they don't want to be involved in all the fighting, they're teachers. And I think things are just too politicized is part of the problem. And I think we need more stability. I've seen a lot of teachers that were jerked around, moved from building to building. They had very long tenures. Because I talked with all these teachers and they, you know, they didn't, before all this stuff happened, they were not recommending people get into teaching. They just, you know, it's a profession. And I respect them. Thanks.
I think that it's tough to address the morality. I mean, we are, we're totally, mostly, and we've spent a lot of time focused on the students and, and supporting them and their education and emotional needs, that kind of thing. But there's also a component of, of supporting the teachers in the same way. I think the district does do a great job of professional development in that, in that regard. Really, when something new is coming along, there are a lot of opportunities for the teachers to really get, you know, the, the training and knowledge in order to teach a new subject. And I think that what we've been seeing is that when programs come up that are brand-new and, and they're, they're eager, and we see a huge number of them are jumping in and saying, I want to, I want to know more about that. I want to be able to do that. So I think, you know, we're working toward, toward morale improvement. It's just, it's a very tough, tough nut to crack. You know, we're not quite in the same boat in New York State as, as many other states, where, you know, teacher pay is not quite so bad here as it might be in, my daughter teaches in Colorado. It really is terrible. You know, there's not a lot of, the support there is just totally different than, than it is here. That being said, you know, there's also limitations on what we can do in terms of providing, you know, financial incentive. Well, we, we work with the union. And there's, so that we are, not that our hands are tied in that regard, but we, we have challenges there. But I think that, you know, we're doing what we can in terms of, of providing the support, not only from the, from the principal and the building administrative level, but I think also that Superintendent Grow does a fantastic job from the top of try, really working very hard to say, you're supported, we're here for you. You're doing a great job.
I agree with Dan. Definitely, I think showing teachers our support, treating them like the professionals that they are, listening to them, talking to them, and offering professional development opportunities. And of course, we do our best to, I know that during the pandemic, Mrs. Grow and our admins not only offered support, mental health support and so forth for students, but they did it for staff as well.
Yeah, I think being visible and actually just walking around the buildings, attending events, and showing them that we're supporting teacher, staff, what, what they're doing, I think is huge. You know, taking two minutes out of your day and just talking to them, whether it is they're sharing something that's amazing that happened to them that day, or if they're kind of like, you know, just airing out like a grievance that they had, they had a rough day, they're just happy to have somebody listen to them. I think too, what we need to do, and I think our district is doing it, Bob Crochetti's got a committee on, you know, retaining and, and seeking out new applicants. We're doing a social media outreach, but where I'd assume that we're trying to grow our own too. You know, we really try to support our former students and try to get them back in the buildings to sub, which I think is huge. You know, collaborating with colleges and universities and try to get student teachers. But I think just trying to be positive and having our administrators be positive to our staff and having our administrators support our staff and having us support our staff, I think really is just kind of like the best, easiest way to do that, is just to show them that we support them, that we care about them, and we love what they're doing. And to celebrate their successes as well as the students, because the teachers get even more excited to think award ceremonies than kids do because they're so proud of all the things their students are achieving, so celebrating successes.
Thank you. So the next question, we're going to start with you, Dan. How will you support and promote an inclusive environment in East Rondacote for all students, staff, and community members? What does equity in the realm of education look like to you?
You know, one of the reasons that we, that we, we moved into Eastern Rondacote, we didn't, that was 28 years ago. We didn't know an awful lot about the district, but, but we got here and realized that, you know, it's, it's very diverse. It's, it's, I think, one of the, one of the most diverse districts in the, in the, in the county in terms of just not only from, from a, you know, just a person of color, but also there's religious diversity and that kind of thing. So, I mean, I'm really supportive of, of all of the initiatives that have happened so far. We have a really active diversity, equity, inclusion committee that's working hard to try to give sort of relevancy to each of the individual cultures. The kids are inquisitive. They want to know why, you know, why that person in their class is, is, what's Ramadan? What are they celebrating this month? Why is that important to them? You know, what does it mean? And I think it's important. We all, we're one culture, we're one group of people, one community, and it's important to understand each other's backgrounds and, and go from there.
Thank you. Carol?
We've been celebrating diversity in this district, I think, since the late 90s, which should tell you how long I've been around. And it's, it's really grown and built. I think we do that by encouraging parent involvement, encouraging community involvement, welcoming people of all ethnicities, which I believe we do into our buildings. And certainly, the diversity equity committee is working towards that as well.
Yeah, I think students should learn from each other, from sharing their experiences. They should also see themselves in instructional material. And also too, like with the, the diversity, equity, and inclusion committee district-wide, and each, each building has subcommittees as well, and they really try to be mindful of like what Awareness Month is happening and use that to like implement that into their instruction. Like, for example, I remember Holliday Road School in the month of February did like a highlight on people of color inventors, so African-American inventors. And then Women's History Month, they highlighted, I can't remember specifically what they did, but they kind of highlight some lessons around each awareness month. And what is really cool too is they try to get the families involved by sending like just a little homework assignment home, nothing too intense, but that way families can kind of share some of their traditions and customs and things they do in their, in their homes. So I think the kids are really learning from each other, which is cool. And also too, like, I think our office of instruction is being mindful in the materials that they are purchasing so kids can see themselves in their learning too. And as Dan said too, you know, we do have one of the most diverse districts in the county, which is great. So it just kind of lends itself to diversity, so.
Don?
I've been in Rondacote 33 years. The crew I had, the work crew, some could barely read and write, some could barely speak English. And two African women, I was, were probably closest to me in the one I've tried to get her to buy a house, but I guess they don't, somebody says they don't believe in interest or something like that. The Muslims had a problem with it, but I don't know. But it's Jose that got me to apply for the job. So I've helped three black candidates get elected in the city, on the city school board. All I got to say is, some people talk what I say do. Don't talk, you know? Thanks.
The next question, we are going to start with Carol. I appreciate the district's support of ENL, English New Language, learners, and the district's emphasis on addressing learning gaps in achievement. I would like to hear the candidate's position on meeting the needs of the advanced learners. Did I get that right? And how can the district provide an equitable and appropriate education for them?
Okay, so I, I think we do that with the programs we've picked up along the way, like IB, which has both diploma, the entire diploma program and, and course program along the way that they can take, Project Lead the Way. We, one of the most wonderful board meetings every year is when the Project Lead the Way kids come and show us their creations that they've done during the year, their, their projects. And they're always so innovative, and I always beg Mrs. Grow to get a patent so that the district can make money on them. And they've not yet done that. And certainly, AVID addresses a lot of those needs. And so I do think we hit all ends of the spectrum, including general education.
Jill?
Yeah, so we were able to hire all those interventionists with our COVID money, which was great. So the good thing about that is it lends itself to, you know, maybe doing some skill building, but it also allows them to also do enrichment as well. So whether it's from the interventionists and they're doing enrichment, or the classroom teacher that they're doing enrichment, but it allows for groupings to expand students' learning. As Carol said, we have Project Lead the Way, IB, AVID, that really allows our students to pick areas that they are interested in and grow and excel in them. We also offer a lot of AP courses, dual-credit courses for college credits, and there's even advanced placement in the middle school as well. So I think we do offer a lot of opportunities for enrichment, as well as clubs too. Like, I'm even thinking here in the elementary schools or mini schools that have like clubs after school or maybe even during the day where they can, you know, do project-based learning and things like that, so.
Don?
I'm agreeing with her, and I'm a practical guy, and I think this illegal immigration stuff on the border, sooner or later, they're going to make a deal, and there's a labor shortage. And we know a lot of them are going to be coming this way. And we have to be prepared. And so anyways, I, I think we're fairly well-prepared now, but there's going to be more of them coming. Thanks.
Dan?
Yeah, I think that, as Jill said, in terms of the, we do, we do spend a lot of resources on the, on English and new language learners and all that, and that, and trying to, you know, do the learning loss interventions, that kind of thing. But at the, at the upper levels like IB, Project Lead the Way are really, I think for many people, they would think, you know, advanced placement is a more common term, but, but IB provides, you know, rigorous framework and, and, and knowledge building for college. Many of our kids that do that, you know, they, they go in their first year of college and they, they feel so, they're like, oh, well, this is, I wouldn't say simple, but they're ready, you know? So there's, I think kids that are in that advanced level do have, do have opportunities to be challenged, so.
So this next question, we're going to start with Jill. There is a divide among the candidates regarding the performance of our schools and achievements of our students. What data do you use to back up your statements and how, on how our students are doing?
The data that we use is Haggerty data, so reading data scores, map data as well. The district is able to give us basically any data that we really want to ask for and look at. So we're able to look at what students are reading on grade level as versus not, what students are performing on grade level for math and what are not. Honestly, I, I think I would never be completely happy unless every kid was earning the grade that they really wanted to, which, you know, my mind is 100, but I, you know, I don't, I know that's not fair. But I, I would, I want everybody to be successful in their own way, on their own terms. And I know this board and I know this administration will continue to strive to grow student success. And we're going to do that, and we're by looking at like programs and curriculum. Like, we just got a new math program in Visions that we piloted, and we're going to go full implementation next year on. And the Invision program gives us a lot of data. It has a success maker. It breaks the data down into skill sets, into standards and whatnot. So we can actually drill down to a standard and see how that student or that class is achieving or that cohort is even achieving each individual standard. So I think we do have a lot of data. We have a great data guy too, and he pulls off magic. So whatever you ask for him, he usually provides. So I, I mean, student achievement is going well, but we need to continue to grow. But I'm happy with all the things that we're doing to improve it.
Oh, like I said, I listened to the college professors that I know personally, and they said the kids aren't prepared as much as they were years ago. And that's, that's in general, not just of East Rondacote. And, and I use the test scores, you know, they got to take these tests every few years. And East Rondacote's not doing as good, and I admit it's handicapped. I know all the, you know, the single-parent thing is high, the under-poverty thing was, was very high. But I always say, tests do count. And we, we can do better. I believe we can do better. I'm not one to accept, you know, things in the bottom. I was taught to win, and, you know, losers get stepped on. So anyways, I want to, I want to keep tests. I really believe tests are a good, a good measurement. To change something, to, to measure something, you need a measurement, a test. And thanks a lot.
I think that Jill mentioned MAPS and Haggerty. I think they're giving us good, good data, reliable data on where the kids are. I think that, you know, people think about the changes in curriculum over, maybe over the last 10 or 15 years, and this, this doesn't seem to be working, the kids aren't making, they're not reaching the level of achievement that we want, so let's change it to something else. We've done that a few times. And it occurred to me over the last maybe five years, especially with the implementation of AVID, that some of this is not so much, the kids, the, the kids need a better framework for, for structuring the way they learn. They're not getting that sort of structured framework outside of the classroom perhaps for lots of challenges. You know, either, it could be, it could be a dual-parent household, but nobody's home, you know? Or they have several siblings, and they're, they're trying to balance all this stuff between school and work and school and home and all this sort of thing. And I think that having, that, that putting better structures in place are allowing the kids to actually focus better and, and, and achieve. We're seeing, we are seeing better achievement and, and this idea that, you know, using, in a lot of ways, technology in the classroom allows the teacher to see individually where kids are and, and which, which little bit of this do they, do they excel at? And which part do they, do they, do they, you know, do they need extra help? So I think that that's part of it, is, is this focus on providing the, these, the strategies. And I think that's going to lift us, lift us up to where we would like to be.
I, I definitely agree with Dan and Jill. And she mentioned MAPS and Haggerty, I won't mention it again. There are, I've, even in the last year, during, if you come to a board meeting, the board reports will show, they'll show us individual students, how they track them individually from the beginning of the year to the end of the year and in between, to see how they're doing. And they break it all down so that they can, they, by they, I should say, teachers can understand how their child learns and what they can do better. There's also definitely a huge change in the last several years under Mrs. Grow, thank you, Mrs. Grow, of collegiality between buildings. I've never seen it before. I've principals talking to principals, so they follow through, they work together. I definitely believe East Rondacote's doing well. Could we do better? Sure, we could always do better. And we're always working and striving to do that.
So this next question, we're going to start with Don. So for the 2021-22 school year, how did the reading and math scores of students in the East Rondacote School District compare to the same scores of students in other suburban school districts in Monroe County? Compare, please compare the scores for high school students specifically.
I'm not sure, but generally, I know they're not doing as good. That's all I'm going to say, because I, I do look at the scores, and I've worked at Far Part, and they, they were, you know, towards the top often. Thanks.
As compared to the other districts in Monroe County?
Correct.
A, a little bit lower. I don't think, I don't, I mean, I don't know what else to say. I mean, I, I think that, but I'm not sure that, you know, compared to the five, say, a five-year period before that, I'm not sure that it was, you know, percentage-wise was much different. You know, we're, we're, you know, you get to the, the post-pandemic year, and everybody went down. Everybody. Didn't matter if you were Brighton or, you know, whatever. So, so that, but I think that, you know, we're staying in the same, we're not losing comparatively to where we were.
I agree with what Dan said. They, they probably are a little lower. I also think it's very hard to gauge anything right now, especially during the pandemic years, because tests were canceled and so forth. So it's hard to do that.
Yeah, I, I'm going to kind of echo you guys as well. I mean, first of all, our kids are such, much more than a test score, and so is our district. Like, yes, unfortunately, I hate to speak holistically, but I'm going to go out on a limb and say, in 2021, most districts' test scores unfortunately did drop. And it's due to a facet of reasons, so many, like, that a lot of people opted out, tests weren't given. I mean, I know one of the, like, some of the tests were just like old questions mashed together, and here you go. So, I mean, I feel like the 2021 scores were so like non-traditional that they're hard to read. to read. But in our district, in East Arundicote, our kids were in school more than almost any other district in the county. So like, our kids were getting social interaction, they were getting instruction that other kids weren't, they were getting in-person instruction, I should say, that other students didn't have the opportunity to. So I, yeah, our test scores maybe not have been where we wanted them to be, but I feel like our kids were growing and learning in so many other ways that I'm proud of that.
Thank you. So I have two more questions, but these are just for Dawn specifically. The first question is, well, I guess it's three questions. What three boards are you on?
I'm not saying. But I've been asked to be on them. And one of them was in the newspaper. And again, I'm not going to tell you that I get along with everybody, but in the long run, we we all get along and they love me. It's just I look at things differently, and I'm I'm more energetic, I'm more of a forward going guy, and I don't like people that sit back and don't do anything.
What school district did you work at?
I worked at Fairport, again. I worked at Fairport, and I I liked it. I liked the people, you know? The little, kids are a little spoiled there compared to here. I, you know, they got more money and are a little spoiled, but.
Okay. And then, when were you employed by a school and what was your position?
I was custodial in charge of two schools and I was employed, I don't remember, 2004 to like a year and a half ago, I retired Labor Day, after Labor Day.
And last one is, what is your experience in education?
Like I said, I, I've been around this all my life. You know, I've been around, had neighbors that were, two of them were superintendents, another friend of mine, Roy's brother, was superintendent of schools. I had relatives that, you know, worked in schools. I socialized with some of the teachers, you know, I've I've been around it, you know? And believe it or not, I'm a lot more educated than strangers think I am. I would say that ninety-nine percent of the people that don't know me underestimate me. That I'm I'm a lot smarter and knowledgeable than most people think I am, but anyways.
Thank you. Oh, we have one more question? Okay, so this one is for Jill. You get to be in the hot seat. How has your experience in another district aid you in being on this board?
It's a great question. In so many ways, I I'm fortunate enough to be on the district leadership team in North Rosewood at where I work, so I am able to collaborate, you know, obviously across districts and all different buildings and whatnot. So I think a lot of it was, I hate to go back to this time, but like, in in COVID, that's when I started on the board though too, like, during the COVID years, like, I probably, you know, maybe asked more questions than I should have to this administration, because I was almost kind of comparing some of the policies and things that we were doing. So it kind of gave me another perspective, another point of view of a lot of things that were going on. Also too, like, our curriculums, some of them are, are, some of our curriculum work is similar to what is taught in East Arundicote and some is different. So I'm able to be exposed to some curriculums that, you know, maybe aren't being used here in East Arundicote and vice versa, and, you know, and be able to have conversations with some of the interventionists and share some of the strategies and things that I'm using and vice versa. Ms. Grow is really good about letting us come in, tour the schools and things like that. So I've had opportunities where, you know, I've gone into a sixth-grade social studies class and observed an awesome lesson, and then, you know, of course, I'm going to email the teacher and be like, oh, my gosh, you did an amazing job, I love what you did with this. And then she's like, well, what are you doing in your social studies class? So like, we kind of like shared some lesson plan ideas and things like that. So it just kind of gives me a little bit of a different perspective and a little bit of a different viewpoint on how to implement new programs or when it's time to kind of switch out programs and what data points to use. Like, we use different data than East Arundicote does, and we're actually looking now to change ours through some conversations we had. So it's, it's just a really good experience for myself to bring back to my district and vice versa to bring here. I bet you just gave me the sign, but.
Okay, so I think that's it for audience questions. So we're going to move on to closing statements. So we are going to start with Dan.
Well, first of all, thank you to the PTSA for supporting tonight. Thank you so much, Danielle, for your, for your hosting. Doug, thank you for videoing, and I'm sure we all have the Barbara Walters filter, so we look fantastic. But all kidding aside, I, you know, it's been a challenging three years for the for the district and and I'm really, but I'm focused on the success, and we're seeing successes all the time. And in hearing the 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 reports from the building administrators, the reports from the teachers that we hear, the students, it's incredible to hear what's happening every day in the school, happening in each, in each individual building. It's, it's, it's really exciting to see the the excitement on their faces, to hear the energy that's there, the idea of the collaboration is, as Carol mentioned, you know, I remember buildings not talking to each other, and I haven't been in Arundicote quite that long, but it was really strange. And and now to see all this happening, you know, I feel as though the the implementation, hopefully, of of pre-K, it, the idea, we're, we're really pushing forward and striving for something better in East Arundicote, and I really, you know, I'd love to be a part of that for at least another three years, so. Thank you.
Carol?
Thank you to the PTA and Danielle for hosting Candidates Night. Thank you to my fellow candidates for caring enough to run for the Board of Education. I ask that you first support our budget by voting yes. East Arundicote has used foundation aid as directed by this board to offset some of the costs of this budget, which I believe is unprecedented and a welcome relief for the taxpayers. I hope you also vote for me, number three, along with my fellow incumbents, number two and four, so that we can continue to work towards providing a quality public education that is physically responsible for our community. Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I want to thank the PTSA, Danielle and Doug, and the district and the candidates, and most importantly, the viewers. If re-elected as school board, I'll draw on my experience as a current board member and an educator to ensure our students receive a high-quality, well-rounded, relevant education that instills a passion for learning and prepares them for their next step, whether that's next grade level, career in tech, technical education, college, or entering the military or workforce. We must work together as a district and community with our, and our partners, sorry. We must work together as a district, community, and with our partners at all level of government so that we can continue to provide our students with an education they deserve. I have the knowledge, skills, experience, and passion to help move our district and students forward. I love serving on the board and look forward to continuing to work on behalf of our students. Please vote yes on May 16th. Again, I'm Jill Ritchie, number four on the ballot. Thank you.
When I worked in Fairport, I used to talk with the speech therapists about what their job was, and psychologists, the teachers, the coaches, gym teachers, music teachers, you know, about their jobs and stuff. And so I've been learning for seventeen years about a lot of these things. And anyways, I think if these people could vote, I think overwhelmingly, they would vote for me. And I used to talk to Dave Dunn a lot, and at first, we didn't get along, but after, we got along very, very well. And I think we're too much alike, the principal, me and the principal, we're too much alike. And anyways, he taught me a lot, he really did, and taught me to keep a good atmosphere in the place, because I heard them talking about schools not talking to each other, and I don't remember, recall that in Fairport, I really don't. Dave wanted to keep a good atmosphere, and everybody, you know, could be heard, and everybody was nice to everybody, and he he really tried to make a good atmosphere. And anyways, I hope like, you know, the people in East Arundicote will vote for me, like, I believe the people in Fairport would vote for me, the teachers, the parents, the PTA, the, thanks a lot.
So that concludes our questions and closing statements. I want to thank everyone for joining us for Meet the Candidates Night. And remember to vote on May 16th from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Eastridge High School. On the ballot will be the district budget and the three seats for the Board of Education. Once again, I would like to thank our candidates, Dawn Markham, Dan McInerney, Carol Watt, and Jill Ritchie. And if you'd like more information on our district budget or the candidates, please visit our website at eastiron.org. Thank you.